Good evening, and I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order on Tuesday, October 17th at approximately 5:30 PM. In order for everyone to hear all of the enlightened discussion this evening, would you please silence or turn off any noisemakers that you may have? And would you please rise and join me in the reciting a Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Here.
Cudunko and Bella excuse.
Approval of the agenda as published.
Salute.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes as published.
Salute.
I'll second it again.
Changes, additions, deletions, amendments, medical remarks.
I'm abstaining because I was not there.
There. All in favor?
Aye.
Comments and correspondence. Let's do correspondence first.
So, begins on page 10 in your packets. Have a letter included in there from Mr. Mike Walker. Mike effectively offers his resignation on the zoning board of appeals. So an appointment will be made, or need to be made to that entity to fill that seat. Looking over to page 11, there is a letter from Mrs. Amy Palaski. She goes into some detail about how absolutely awesome our Marina and its staff are. She quotes, or I quote, saying, "Every time we dock, the dock hands me this with a smile. The restrooms are always cleaned and well stocked from our perspective. Marina Fest was a big success." I could go on, but you get the idea and want to be right because I know that a lot of people will contact government officials to complain, but very few will take the time to let them know when things are going well. We had a great time at the Marina this year and excited about all the good things happening in the village. We thank you, Angela Rawn, and everyone else who works so hard to make Sister Bay such a special place. Get those items, sir.
Comments? Before I open up for comments, we are having a public hearing on the budget in a little while, so if you're here to talk about the budget, you'll have your opportunity to talk then. Other than if you'd like to speak on a non-agenda item, now would be the time. Dick?
Dick Boros, Maple Drive. I have three items I'd like to briefly comment on. First one is I would like to thank the village board for the recent survey specific to the premier sales tax issue and the questionnaire that went out with it. And I would like to lend my voice in strong support of the premier sales tax. And I think that when people start to break it down and realize how, what an effective piece of legislation it is, how it can help the village, it kind of seems to be like a no-brainer. I realize a lot of people hate to see additional taxes, and that's certainly what it is, but it makes an awful lot of sense in Sister Bay. So, thank you for that, and please give it serious consideration. Second, I'd like to address the recent decision to put no parking signs on Maple Drive in a permanent fashion. I understand there was some discussion, probably the Parks Committee looked at it, Streets Committee reprimanded, of where that decision came from. But, my wife and I are not certain that we agree with the decision. The recent blacktopping of Maple Drive has caused that road to be a runway from the U. They will come around the corner and they open it up. By the time they hit our house, it's 60 miles an hour. And on Friday and Saturday night, the only thing that slowed them down was some parking on the road, even if it was one side. I understand the reluctance to have parking on that road, but I also think something needs to be done with the speed and then there is at least one street light that has been out most of the summer, so that whole thing is very dark. You know, every fall festival, we put no parking on there. I think that's a requirement. But this year was particularly dangerous, and we were very fearful as it became dark, and rains were coming, and people were walking back to their car on Woodcrest, which is a half-mile walk. You know, when we heard the sirens at 10 o'clock, we thought it was certain that someone was here. And they continued down that road in the dark, in the rain, until 3:00 AM. So, I want to applaud you again for the work on the parking in the village over the festival. I think you've done a lot of good things. But with every action, there's a reaction, and one of the reactions is that that half-mile walk can be troublesome. There's no sidewalks there. And, again, I think it needs to be rethought completely. Finally, a comment on Fall Festival. I've always enjoyed the festival. I saw some of you there. It was a good time. But I've got to say that I was dismayed by the nondescript beer signs throughout the village, the big, long ones that said Budweiser, Bud Light, Miller Lite, because they were nondescript, other than perhaps they were offered up as, you know, put these up and you can get a couple bucks off of your own beer. Fall Festival used to be a really classy operation with window painting, and cornstalks, and pumpkins, and it was a lot of fun. It looked like a frat house, up and down the street with these beer signs. I don't think it's necessary, and I think the village could easily say, if your sign isn't informative, if it doesn't have a menu on it, if it doesn't have something else supporting. But I just, I don't know why there was that many signs, but they were tacky, and it made, I think, it lessened the festival. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Chris?
Chris Hack, I'd like to speak briefly as the Fire Chief. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the village for the continued support of the Fire Department and all that you're doing together. I'm going to talk a little bit about the elephant in the room, just briefly, and I'm doing it in this fashion so that I really don't want to get into question and answer. I'd like to commend, and have commended for a couple of years, as the sewer water issue has waxed and waned, come and gone, that the Fire Board and the Fire Board members have been very good about not allowing the issues between the village and the town to affect the Fire Department. That's begun to change a little bit. I've been involved in some discussions with the town that we don't need to get into here today. But as I sit with the village and as I sit with the town in relative confidence and have discussions, it's kind of a unique position, right? I can, I listen and I advise on both. I don't work for either. It becomes clear that there's a lot of communication issue, up and down, within the boards and board-to-board. Over the last three meetings at Fire Board level, I think there have been significant strides made to break down some of those barriers, and I commend those people who have been involved in that. And I commend the President. He has reached out now across the Gulf with a letter and is trying to work very hard to bring you all together in a meeting. And I would just ask, as you go into that meeting, understand that while you may have differences in one topic, you have far more alike than you have different. And it'll be very important that you don't fixate on one thing, because the trickle-down effect is horrendous. You sat the other day and made a list of all the things that you do together and could do together. And don't jeopardize that based on one thing, okay? Work collaboratively. You know, if you look at this building, this building is an example of that collaboration. Where we sit today, wouldn't it be possible without collaboration between the village and the town, the village and the county, and the village and the public, right? We all have an interest in this building, and we all work together to make that happen. Think about that when you meet as two boards together, work to solve your differences and look at the bigger picture. Don't focus on that, okay? See you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris Hack.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the time section. I'll leave the budget right away, budget hearing.
Six o'clock budget hearing, so we just go ahead and do business on number one.
What's that for six?
Yep.
Item number one, review and consider final approval for plans for remodel and expansion at 10440 State Highway 57, the patio motel slash kitchen restaurant. Consider appropriate motion for action.
Okay. So, we're going to have some technical challenges tonight with the overhead. For whatever reason, it seems to cycle on and off, so we'll do the best that we can do. This, as an item, it's coming for Plan Commission. Plan Commission has recommended it on for approval. Let's see if I can make it sound. To Village Board. The reason it's before the Village Board is because it's a commercial development that involves a development agreement. This is at the site of the, what's now called Kitchen, the old patio drive-in and motel. What they are looking to do is to just do some very, sort of minor modifications to the site, including, there it goes. Let's wait, and there we go. So, there's going to be a new, new building.
Who's got the controller?
Little bit of an addition off of the front here that'll act as a dining or breakfast area, sort of cleaning up some of the more non-conforming aspects of the existing restaurant facility.
I'll make a motion to approve a question recommendation for the patio motel kitchen.
Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Could you guys just dim these lights a little bit, overheads?
Development plans, I can need a supper.
Chris, you got it.
Just go down to the warning center.
Kind of.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Denise, can you amend your motion to group it up?
Sure. Well, I figured you were writing it, so.
I just fumbled through.
Item number two, review and consider final approval for plans for a hotel slash condo by 10722 Bay Shore Drive, Andy Church Home by Pac-a-Lon Builders. Consider appropriate motion for action.
Okay. So, in your...
It's 30 in your packets.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Sorry. Can't read in the dark.
So, again, beginning on page 50, there's a board report and some associated plans for, I'm going to describe this orally while we try to work out the technical hurdles of the projector that seems to be possessed this Halloween. What this amounts to is a condo hotel at the intersection of Bay Shore Drive and Sunset in downtown Sister Bay. It is a 12-unit condo hotel. There will be a total of 36 bedrooms. It is a part of that facility. You can see it depicted there in your packets. It does conform to the village's zoning code with regard to height and setback and parking. A final landscaping plan will need to be submitted, and we anticipate that a condo plot will be submitted subsequent to state approval of the plans. We can't do a condo plot till the state's done with their plan approval, because the map lines may move around from a condo plot designation standpoint. Architecture plans will need to be brought back to the Plan Commission for one more kick, and Chairman of the Plan Commission and I are also working on a development agreement. That'll be a request from the Chairwoman of the Plan Commission, that that be handled that way. The developer needs to be able to pull an early start permit in order to get a foundation in this year. Typically, we would bring you the plans with the development agreement, but since we don't have a development agreement, we're bringing you just the plans tonight to see where what's going on, looking for a motion to approve the plans.
Do you have a question? So, the plans need to go to the state?
Yes, sir.
And that's why they need to...
Yes, sir.
...move the plans ahead?
Yes, sir.
To get the quick start.
Yep. So, the terms of the development agreement will need to be pulled together, and we may need to loop Attorney Nesbit into that, just depending on what comes out of it.
And there was an issue with an adjoining parcel?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to talk?
Later, is that a later conversation?
I think we're going to be having a conversation later this evening, in the close.
Okay. That's my question.
I have a question. Were there going to be retail spaces in a lower level?
So, I'll ask Attorney Nesbit to sort of come in behind me on this particular commentary. Our zoning code speaks to a number of uses inside the B3 zoning designation, which this is a part of, and as long as that use is a permitted use, then the owner slash developer of a property is entitled to engage in any number of those uses. So, one of them could be mixed-use development as a permitted use. Another one could be hotel. Another one could be condo hotel. Another one could be B&B. And in this case, they are choosing to do the condo hotel route. There was some conversation initially about having solidly residential above and solidly retail commercial space down below. After they got into development a little bit more and had some dialogue with the Plan Commission, this is the route they chose to go. So, 25% of the units will be in a part of a rental pool, and we'll need to work out the details of that with the development agreement to ensure things go where we want them to go.
So, 16 bedrooms?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
But didn't...
But 12, 12 units.
That seems very dense. Just, my feeling is just very dense, but...
Yep.
I don't think the Plan Commission disagrees with your take.
It does fit with the zoning, you know, and it's the type of thing where it's a permitted use. I think the Plan Commission may prefer a different designation here and a different configuration, but he meets the requirements, and it is something that should be approved based on that.
And what happens when it goes to state? What are they trying to approve there?
State will look at it from a construction code standpoint, so fire ingress egress, materials, engineering, to sure that it's structurally sound, where trusses are going to be, or metal support beams will be, havoc systems and equipment, plumbing that's adequate. So, the state will give all of that.
Anything else? Make a motion?
I'll make the motion we approve the hotel condo plot of 10722 Bay Shore Drive as presented.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Item number three, discussion on the Fire Department CIP for 2018. Consider appropriate motion for action.
So, this is an item that was put together and handed to you at the beginning of the meeting, and this came back to us after running through budget process number one at the request of Trustee Burdo and Fire Commission. So, I'm so sorry, guys.
That's not far from our place.
So, I'll ask Burdo to speak on the...
Do you want me to speak first?
Fire Commission?
What, about the new fire truck?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Are there, I'm sorry, are there other changes other than the fire truck in this?
No.
Okay. Just a lot to potentially look at, but really, it's just the fire truck.
This is just the budget that came straight from the Fire Department. There are no alterations from what was seen by the Fire Department or by anyone else.
Okay.
For many, many years, and you can ask Chief Hack how many years that's been, the Fire Commission has had a timeline of when to replace vehicles. And periodically, they may be moved a year or so, or pushed forward, or whatever, but it's always been laid out, and the town and the village have been fully aware of that timeline. In the last couple of years, the village has used all of the funds that have been stashed in different funds for very specific things to pay for a lot of the downtown and beach improvements instead of borrowing the money. It was staff's recommendation recently, who also sat down with Chief Hack and asked if the new R-12 rescue could be pushed out and not have any capital outlay for five years. And Chris said that probably something could be done, but he, I don't want to put words in his mouth, I feel he was uncomfortable pushing it off that many years. This wouldn't be happening for two years anyway. I am of the belief that this has been in motion. We have known about it. The funds were spent elsewhere. I don't want to see us push this out, because then it may or may not mean the other things are pushed back also as we get to those years and those particular vehicles that need replacement. So, somehow, some way, I would like us to try to figure out how we can purchase this vehicle in the fashion that it was meant to be purchased, and I believe that would be delivery for 2020. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah.
So, we do have a couple of years to figure that out. I don't know necessarily that we have to do something specific with the budget this year, but I also wanted the board to weigh in as a whole, seeing that it is just Scott and myself on the Fire Commission, and I feel very strongly about this. I don't know how Scott feels about it, but I didn't want to be saying one thing at the Fire Commission and not necessarily maybe having the backing of the entire board as I would.
What is, what is the financial impact of that?
If we buy a new one, Chris, roughly Sister Bay share would be 300,000?
Yeah, about 300,000.
Yeah.
Okay, and so the question I would have is in this, and again, that's why I'm asking if there's any differences. In here, it says 2019 rescue refurb, 150,000. Is that still a consideration, or the current thought is a replacement, or?
You want me to come forward?
Sure.
So, the budget process outlined a couple of different options, and the options range from do nothing to replace it with new, and those costs swing from high to low. The money that was in there was a 2009 estimate, based on what it would cost to refurb it at the time. It was the Fire Department's recommendation going forward into the budget process that we refurb and not replace it. That was our first option. The dollar figure that Mr. Burdo brings forward would be a replacement cost. So, in the budget, we broke out the cost of ownership over, we estimated 15 to 20 years we could get out of the vehicle to refurb it, 30-plus years if we just replaced it. Current vehicle we have, on its current schedule, will be 34, 35 years old before it would be replaced. So, there's a lot of walls in the air. There's a lot of things to change. Because of our budget process and the way that the municipalities have asked us to do this, we have a multiple-year process to go through to get approvals. It's very hard to estimate in year one's approval process what it's going to look like by year three or four as far as actual costs or estimates.
And one of the reasons that I was more interested in buying new is because of the 30-year lifespan versus refurbishing it at a 15-year lifespan, and when the cost was broken down for those years, it was a miniscule of a difference between...
Three thousand.
Three thousand dollars.
Right, when you break out the years, you know, cost divided by years, 15 or 20, or 15 years worst case, 30 years best case, right, you're doubling the lifespan, you're lessened down on the cost potential.
Okay.
So, I kind of just, I wanted to get some direction from the board on how they felt, and so I would know how to proceed on the commission.
I agree with Denise on purchase of new over the refurbished unit. You're still dealing with a 1987 chassis that's now...
If we refer to, we would hopefully replace the chassis as part of the vehicle, keep the box, keep the major components.
Which still needs some upgrades.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'm on board with Denise as far as purchase of new.
I guess from my standpoint, from speaking for the Fire Board, what we're looking for is, you know, is this year one of a multi-year, or are we going to push this a year? I can speak for the town, they're okay with pushing for a year if need be, you know, we had a good conversation, staff levels, Tasha, and we really went over the finances. And, again, you know, like I said earlier, this is really a partnership between the village, the town, the Fire Board, and we all understand that each of us are in a different place financially at any given point in time. And the town, we bought the lighter truck, the town was in the position that you're in now, and you were in the position the town is in now. You know, you had good money then, they didn't, now they have good money, you didn't. But, we understand that we need to work together, and if there is a reason to push a year, that's okay. You know, the initial ask was to push five years. We can't, can we push five years, one year at a time? That's a discussion we have to have every year, right? I agree, there are some definite dangers to not pushing, but I'd like to move forward with this. It's still 2020 before we replace this. We're looking otherwise at 2021. But that being said, and we work with Tasha, and we look at the numbers, you know, just truly doing the math, there are some mathematical reasons to wait. That is a decision that you have to make.
So, we heard from Dick Burrows earlier, who spoke out in favor of the Pratt, which is a premier area resort tax. I would say that given our current financial needs, not just with the Fire Department, but village-wide, with our park systems, with our roads, with our information, infrastructure, our storm sewer system, you know, as you think about what kind of a financial impact, not just this replacement, but every replacement after this is going to have, as well as all the capital replacements, not as part of the Fire Department, it just calls to mind one more reason that we would support a Pratt going through, largely because, Tasha, if memory serves correctly, fire equipment is one of the items that is called out in state statutes that premier resort tax money can be spent on.
One of staff's, one of the reasons that staff recommended, you know, pushing one year was because looking at the Fire Department's CIP schedule, there's nothing scheduled for 2020. So, pushing it one year did not push anything farther down the line. It simply moved that hole from 2020 to 2019. If you choose not to do that, that's fine, that was just a recommendation from staff.
So, there's really two questions, refer versus new and push versus not push.
And if I could interject, I don't, I don't know that you want to muddy the waters right now about refer versus new.
Okay.
Although, I understand where that may make a difference as far as whether you want to push or not. I guess, you know, there's a lot of time and a lot of things that have to be really nailed down in that whole discussion. I guess if I were you, and you were going to make a decision, make it on the worst-case scenario. So, worst-case, Denise, we're going to buy new, and it's going to cost $700,000 roughly, but up for one-third of that. Base your decision whether to delay or not based on that, not on a best-case scenario of, you know, one-third of, $300,000 or whatever, is what I mean. You know, I would, I think it is premature to hamstring the Fire Board and Fire Department today with, it has to be a refurb or it has to be, there's just way too many. At this point, when you call a vendor to talk about what it would cost to refurb that or replace that, and you say, hey, I want to talk about refurb of this truck in 2020, they do not have time to work out that number. You know, they'll tell you, okay, we did one sort of similar last year, and here's about what it cost. And I don't blame them for that.
Okay, so that whittles it down, too.
And I hate to do that to you, but that's the nuts and bolts of it.
But I guess I would feel more comfortable, I don't know about Scott, is if we, as the Fire Commission does talk about this, if I'm talking about something and making a recommendation, of course, the board can say no. You know, if we do want to buy new and the board wants us to go refurbished, I guess I'd like to know that going in, if the board is okay with that. And whatever the outcome is at the time that we make that decision, okay, but...
Well, my personal opinion is to push it the year, but because we're pushing the year, go for the new, because it's just going to be that many years older by the time you get to it.
Would you push it to 2020 then, or 2021?
So, suddenly, the delivery would go to 21 then.
Okay.
If you're planning on worst-case, dollar-wise. It's my opinion.
Yes. Well, as a former Fire Board member, I commend you on having foresight. This gets put together, you do a super...
This gets put together, you do a super job. I want to support you. If we can, we will work toward that. The next several years look challenging with debt and everything else. And so depending, I want to support it, and I will work toward that. I think we really are going to need to rely on Tasha, on does this Pratt happen, or some other things with land sales and refinances. And if we can do new soon, great. If we, if it becomes, you know, really, you know, challenging, as much as I want to say, yeah, go ahead, you know, we may get a year or two down the road and say it does need to go a year or two, or it does need to be a refurb versus a new, maybe. But my heart is in the right place, and you do a good job, and I want to do it.
That's part of the reason we have gone into this multi-year approval process, is because we're talking about large dollar figures, and we want multiple looks over multiple years to try and project the effects of that. And so even if you say, yes, we're going to proceed today, and we're not going to delay a year, next year you may say, no, or now we're going to restart the clock, you know, we're going to say no this year. You have that ability throughout the process.
One of your options would be to look at structuring some financing so that you're able to continue with the schedule that the fireboard has recommended, and yet keep the payments in line with something that's more manageable, given that we have the prospect of some property sales and other things that's going to restructure our debt picture. So it's just a thought, you know, if you're inclined to look at that, potentially we can handle it in that respect.
Well, again, when it actually comes up for what it's going to be, that would be the time to have.
Right. I mean, there's things potentially later tonight that could help or not in short term, so.
Yep.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud. Sorry. Is that the discussion you wanted to have on the budget? Do you want to approve this budget? Liberty Grove?
I guess, does the board want, recommend for Scott and I to push the truck a year?
One year?
Personally, yes, for me.
I would recommend it.
I think if it's going to be new, it's going to be easier to have more time to try to come up with the money to do new. If you want to be a little more flexible on, we're going to hope to go new, but it might be a refurb, depending upon how things go, and keep it on a schedule, you know. And again, maybe things will happen over the next 12, 18 months that we can come back and say, hey, we can do it as planned. But there's a lot of moving parts, as you know.
I understand.
Could...
I just really wanted some direction.
Our intentions maybe here, yeah, that's a hard one, though. Without saying we're going to, you know, maybe have a large property tax increase because we need, or where the debt load is, I'd, you know...
Yeah, it's going to require some financial management to structure things so that everything moves appropriately.
Okay, so then, from what I'm hearing, is that there's general consensus that Scott and I will take back to the fire commission on pushing it a year.
For a new vehicle.
And we'll inform Liberty Grove of that then.
And that's, I think, we're, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of the feeling that the commission had too. But Denise Riley said, you know, I'd like to bring it back to my full board and have the discussion, open discussion.
Okay. So the document we were given was the 2018 budget proposal for the Sister Bay, Liberty Grove Fire Department, with a potential motion to be made. Are you asking us to make a motion to approve the 2018 fireboard budget, or?
Let me ask a question of Chris, if I can. Chris, the way this has worked historically is that we've got this program, and as you mentioned earlier, the sort of positions have switched around between the town and the village. If they go back to the fireboard and the town says, we don't want to wait a year, what would that mean?
They could have, they could potentially force your hand a little bit.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, they are the majority voice in the department, right, because they're one-third. I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that'll happen. Could it happen? Yes, absolutely it could happen. We've seen it happen in our budgets before, where fireboard will approve a budget, go to the village and town, the village will approve it, the town cut, and then it has to come back, and the town has forced the village then to redo their budget based on their changes that they make. It would be much more difficult for the village to cut and force the town because of the minority vote, right, 3-2 on board. Historically, that hasn't, the fireboard has never looked at themselves, at least in my 10 or 16 years as achieved, they've never really been polarized that way. They don't see themselves, they see themselves, at least in my view, they see themselves as a board, not as representatives of two entities, and they work together very well. We talked about that earlier. Could they force your hand? Yes. The read I get from the three of them that have been involved in these discussions, they're not going to do that. They have openly said they very much want to cooperate and do, because they have been where you are, they understand what that means, and they very much want to help. Now, that being said, they understand that there's also a need to move forward, and it is a partner, you know, a partnership between the three entities, and at some point in time, we have to move forward.
So does the fireboard have another meeting to approve their budget?
No, it's been approved.
Okay, so then you want us to approve?
So what happens is there's multiple things that are approved. There's our operations budget, that was approved. There was a couple of small CIP things, that was approved in the fore. The only thing that the fireboard hasn't approved is whether they get thumbs up or thumbs down on the first year of the heavy rescue replacement. And they were waiting, at the last meeting, they were going to go thumbs down, push a year, and Denise said, I'd like to table this to bring it forth to the village, Sister Bay for full discussion because of what it is and the impact, and then bring it back, and they said, fine, we'll wait till our next week, and then go thumbs up or thumbs down, because it really doesn't affect...
Okay, so we have nothing else to do with this?
No.
You finally got the answer.
No, you're not. Sorry. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, it's now slightly after six, so we will put item number four, the public hearing, the first draft of the recommended 2018 village's budget, consider motion to discuss, and to refer to a special village's board meeting on February 24th at 6:00 PM for subsequent discussion and adoption. So I will ask Tasha and Zeke to give us a brief overview.
Do you want to get a shot?
And then we'll open up for public discussion, and anybody in the public is welcome to stand up and come up to the mic if you prefer, so we can hear you, and have any discussion on any of the budget items or budget areas that you would like.
See how this works? I'm sorry to bring some technical...
I'm going to leave it in that mode of overview, just so I can see what I need to talk about that.
Okay. So this is our 2018 annual budget for the village of Sister Bay. The purpose of our budget is really to meet our statutory legal requirements, provide resources to the community, and match the goals and the needs of the community and the board through those resources. I'm going to go through this kind of quick, since there's nothing pretty at there to see. Just a review of our budget process. We usually start internally reviewing the budget with initial drafts, in-house, having department meetings, and working on those current year, end year projections. And then in August, going through the personnel reviews and doing our CIP planning. And in September, working with our operational committee meetings, working on their finance committee, and having a number of meetings with the finance group, and finalizing the proposed budget that we have tonight. And then in October, we do our public hearing and the authorization of that in two-meeting format. I have a graph up here of our assessed value. I wish you could see that a little bigger, but I'll give you kind of an overview. The assessed value has been on a pretty fair, a pretty steady decline in recent years. The sharp decrease you see in 2015 to 16, that was a revaluation year, and we lost about $11 million in assessed value. Our assessed value for 2017 has bumped back up to 415,756 by 81.
Million.
Million, sorry. So a little bit of improvement. Losing that much in assessed value definitely, you know, hurts as far as what we can do for taxes and what we, what we can do with our money and throughout the village. This shows our net new construction. It really fluctuates every year. We had a great year for net new construction of a little over $6.5 million in 2017. Without that net new construction number, our assessed value would have dropped again to a little over $3.5 million. So the net new construction is crucial to our tax value. So for every $1 million increase in assessed value, whether through net new construction or a change in valuation, the village generates about $5,700 in tax revenue. Without 2017's net new construction, the mill rate would be about 1.6% higher than what we're currently proposing, to generate the same amount of revenue. This is an overview of our 2017 to 2018 comparison. Our total levy, our total tax rate without adjustments for net new construction is an increase of 3.71%. With accounting for changes in assessed value and net new construction, it's a 3% tax increase in the mill rate. For a $300,000 home, that means an increase of $16.05. Just an overview of how our budget works. We have a number of governmental funds and two enterprise funds. We have our general fund, debt service fund, our CIP, and our tax increment district, and then we have a small special revenue fund for the ice rink. Then our enterprise funds are the marina and the utilities. The utility is really broken down into three separate funds that we add up into one collective unit. So an overview of the governmental funds. Jump ahead a bit. Okay. Our fund balance is growing again. We took a little bit of a hit in fund balance last year, but we've made some adjustments within, throughout the year, to build that fund balance back up. Projected for 2018, we're back up to policy level of 25% on a side fund balance, so all of that is really good and very healthy. General fund revenues, this is just kind of how we break everything down. Obviously, the large portion of that is taxes. We get quite a bit from intergovernmental revenue and from licenses and permits. So we're looking at a total decrease in revenues of about $183,000 or 8.76%. Really, most of this is due to how we allocated the taxes this year. We allocated a little more to debt service and less to the general fund. Last year, we had $250,000 transferred from the general fund to debt service to make up for some changes. That's not the case this year. That amount is directly allocated to the debt service fund. So it's a little deceiving. We are looking at an increase in safe transportation aids of $10,000, so that was good news. That is a change from what the finance committee saw, we just got that number in. We are looking at a decrease in permit revenue, primarily due to a decline in building permits by about $6,000. We are also looking at an increase in public charges for services primarily related to the trolley. The trolley is in the budget for next year. We also have, we have some funds left over for our fire station maintenance line item. The fire station is in need of a second stage of a roof repair, and that's a pretty expensive item. So we have funds left over from this year. We, through the finance committee, committed those funds to the 2018 budget, so you see a line item in the revenue, and add that correspondingly to the expense, so. Our general fund expenditures are broken down largely for general government and parks and streets, and then there are transfers in administrative expenses as well. We have a total decrease in expenditures of 466,000 or 19.63%. Excluding transfers, though, we have an increase in expenditures of 26,736. So the bulk of the difference is in those transfers to CIP or TIF or anywhere else. General government expenditures are decreasing 38,450 or 6.5%, 05%. Legal expenditures in that section are budgeted to decrease $40,000 to $50,000 in 2018. In the administrative section, we have an increase in expenditures of 31,601 or 12.01%. The increase is in, is related to direct employee costs, primarily due to a reduction in the allocation of administrative wages to the TIF, and an increase in health insurance premiums. And if you don't know what the, I guess, our allocation to the TIF is, we, you know, take some of our wages and allocate them to different funds based on how much work we do in those different funds. We're expecting a little less to be done in the TIF as a lot of these big projects are completed, so there's less allocated that to the TIF. And in parks and streets, we see an increase in expenditures of 33,585 or 4.32%. We have an increase in direct employee costs in full and part-time wages, wages for trolley drivers and employee medical insurance. We have, we see an increase in indirect employee costs as a result of turnover and for some additional safety training. And we see an increase in maintenance costs for grounds, parks, trees, and sports complex. In our debt service fund, this is a little pie chart of our debt capacity for used versus available. So we have a little over $20.5 million in available debt capacity. 5.4 of that is available to us at this point. In 2017, we refinanced our 2011 bonds and saved approximately $520,000 in expense over the life of that debt. We have saved $165,000 this year, $133,000 the next, and so on. So those are really great tax impacts for debt service right now. We have no new debt issues planned at this time. The refinancing and restructuring opportunities are reviewed all the time. And our room tax revenue, this has been helpful to us, has been budgeted to increase another $21,000 or 14%. The funds that we've had coming in for room taxes have been wonderful, so.
We account for the lion's share of the growth in door county for room tax collection. This projection does not include the new hotel condo that Packerland Builders is proposing to construct, or anything on the Braum property that might come up.
Okay, this is a graph showing our current and projected debt service. This was an important one. As you can see, 2018, we have about $1.4 million in debt service. That pops back up in 2019. You have a balloon payment for our beach loan. We can either pay that off or restructure it. That's a conversation to be had at a later date. And then we drop back down a little bit in 2020 and pop back up in 2021 when we see the core loan come down.
So this particular graph, we had anticipated that depending on when we were talking about it, three or four years out, there would be kind of a drop-off. When we did the advanced refunding predominantly, that changed how some of these payments fell. So we ended up instead of a single peak and drop-off with a bi-modal peak and two drops-off.
And you can see, based on this graph, the general fund and the marina will continue to carry some debt, but the utility, as it stands right now, pays off all of their debt in 2020. For capital projects in the budget right now, we have $188,000 being transferred from the general fund. There is $30,000 for the fire department capital expenditures. In the fire department's budget, as you just discussed, there is, the only request for 2018 is a port account machine, and our portion of that would be somewhere around $5,000, the way it looks right now. So there would be some reserves that we carry over from 2018 to future years. We also have reserved $28,000 for street storm sewer and sidewalks, $20,000 for parks, $10,000 for buildings and facilities, $50,000 for vehicles and equipment, $30,000 for IT, and $20,000 for the ice rink. This excludes anything related to the premier resort area tax. Assuming that the village moves forward with the Pratt and the referendum passes, those funds would be monitored in a separate CIP and tracked separately due to the statutes and how it's defined as to what we can spend that money on. and how it's defined as to what we can spend that money on. Moving on to TID. The equalized value increased 2.7 million. Increment is expected to increase about $38,000 to $122,467. Again, we have a decrease in the admin wages allocated to the TIF by $20,000. And the TID operating transfers, there is a budget policy as part of our budget document that would allow the finance director in consultation with the auditors to make some transfers to pay back the fund, the other funds from the village that have borrowed money, that the TID has borrowed money from. So for example, the capital fund in which the TID has borrowed money to pay for the parking lot or any of the other improvements that we've done. Assuming that there is positive cash balance and positive fund balance, we would make a transfer at the end of the year to move those funds back to the CIP and just start paying back those funds. And we can, you know, run that through the board or through the budget policies, one way or another. And real quick review of the ice rink. We have a transfer from the general fund of $19,000 budgeted this year. There are some extra direct employee cost budgeted this year because our ice rink manager is close to getting out of the, out of the business a little bit. And we want to train some of our current staff to be able to take over or to spend some time up there, so. In our enterprise funds, our marina, we are showing an increase in revenues of $32,000 to $23,000 or 5.17%. Can you flip forward to? We are also showing an increase in operating expenses of $57,444 or 17.83%. We have budgeted net operating income of $152,184. This is enough to cover debt principal payments of $104,216. In the utilities, we have budgeted a rate increase for the water fund. We currently have a rate study under review with the PSC that is likely to not take effect now as we had discussions yesterday with the PSC. It would be a step process as far as how the rates would go into effect. There would likely be no increase at least until June or the third quarter, so. We also have wastewater and collection rates that we schedule, are scheduling for review. There are a number of really large projects, and we'll talk about those, utility capital projects in a moment. The water fund is expected to show a net income of $79,455. The wastewater fund is expected to show a net loss of $243,385. While that looks large, it's not really that alarming. Most of that loss comes from a depreciation expense. And, you know, a fund with as many capital assets as they have, that's pretty typical. And as long as our operating funds are covering our capital needs and our debt needs, we're good. So we feel really comfortable with that. Our collection fund is expected to show a net income of $10,310. So in the utilities, there are a number of projects for 2018, and to me, this is probably one year. Meter replacements will continue to be ongoing. The main lift station project is the biggest one that's looking to be a spring project. I know we had hoped to have that sorted in November, but we are still waiting on one approval. We are looking at a telemetry upgrade, re-roofing well number one, a GIS mapping project, repairing the sludge concentrator, replacing a vehicle, and an IT upgrade. So that's the budget in a nutshell. In your board packets, there is much more detailed information as to what changes and why. And I would be happy to answer any questions of anyone else.
Okay. We're going to open up to the general public. Dick?
Just a quick question. Is the budget online on Sister Bay's site?
It is online, correct. Yes. We had some, we had some problems after the posting. It would have gone up right away, but our, our website went down for about a week. So as soon as we could get it up, we did get it posted. And it's now available at the office as well.
It's on the homepage, and it's on the internet, so.
Sharon Dorshin, Maple Drive, member of the Parks, Parks and Streets Committee.
Come over to the microphone, please.
Okay.
There we go. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on two budget items tonight. I understand your difficulties in working with the challenges of a budget because I've been on your side of the table for many years. I'm here to advocate for support of a program that is health, education, recreation, and youth in our community. I know you are considering cutting entirely our co-op program with the YMCA, which we hold for eight weeks in the summer in Sister Bay. So I'm here to advocate for not throwing out the baby with the bathwater, but for something lesser. It was originated in 2009 by myself, the late Peter Trencher, and the then-director, Matt Luters. The whole purpose of it was that in exchange for some subsidy from Sister Bay, the Y would then bring programming to our facilities in Sister Bay, giving them here, using our facilities, and thereby giving a big cross break to anyone who was a resident, taxpayer, renter, or a hotel renter, tourist use of those programs. Now, the Y added another incentive that if you were both a Sister Bay resident and a Y member, you could attend all these things free. And we worked out, you know, a program that included youth camps, tennis for adults and children, and adult exercise wellness kinds of classes, which have undergone changes, you know, from yoga to Pilates to whatever you're able to do. It was also meant, at the time it was originated, to really enhance the usage of our new waterfront because the programs take place there, the historic village hall, and our sports complex. So it had kind of a two-fold structure of what we wanted from the program. Now, it was also meant to reward people living and paying taxes in Sister Bay for that. It has grown, of course, in both program size and the expenditure of it, and thereby our, our portion of the support. I actually voted against last year's program, and I'm the biggest supporter because I thought it had gotten too big, too cumbersome. Some of the programs were even offered up at the Y, and I do not approve of that. It should all be here in Sister Bay if we're supporting any part of it. So I voted against that, but I do believe that I would like to ask the finance committee and the board to take a look at allowing me to negotiate with the Y to go back to some of our original simplified programs and cut in half. I would be asking for half of last year's budget, which amounts to $6,000, to streamline, reduce, see if they could match what we want, you know, with, with what they're able to give us. I've worked with every director at the Y for all this time. I have the nine years of records and arguments and programming and PR, and I think, you know, we could come to some understanding. I'm here to advocate for programs for our young people and our young families because I do believe that our budget is, and our activities and everything we're doing is geared to the necessary item of the tourist industry. We are all impacted by it. It doesn't matter if we're a young family with young children and have nothing to do with working in, in one of the tourist-related activities. We are impacted by that in Door County and Sister Bay. But I think we need to think about people that live here. We want to attract people to live here year-round and those kind of summer activities. And for our seniors who are retired here, that's our two communities, kind of, because their grandchildren were eligible then, you know, when they're here in the summer to attend these programs. And so we used to have a vibrant youth center that needs volunteers, you know, before we're going to budget any more money for it. We have skateboard equipment that, with a few hundred dollars of repairs and placing it out for the summer, and I'm told we need some volunteers to help with that. Well, you know, not all of it can come from volunteers. So in conclusion, I'm asking to find out, and I found the place to get it except for We have also in the parks, it comes out of the parks budget, we have a planned tree planting program for planting hardwoods in our park where we know the age of cedar trees are going to go to create, even with the beautiful view, we do need shade trees, you know, in our waterfront and our park. We just planted in our, on our village property, eight good hardwood trees, and it's just this fall, five of them down, you know, in the waterfront. We have budgeted for the, for additional planting next year, $4,900. As a member of wanting all things down there in the parks committee budget, I'm willing to prioritize from my opinion and ask the other members of the parks committee, that's $4,900. We could skip a year of hardwood tree planting because of the health and the nature of, we assessed every tree we have down that park and how long it might last and where the next ones would come from. So I think that if we could find $1,100 somewhere and you could reinstate in your budget $6,000 somehow, and then again, if I cannot work with the Y to achieve what, what I think we want and bring that to the parks for their approval, then I would, then I would relinquish my support of the program. So that's the first item I wanted to talk to. And then I just wanted to give my support to an item that I know others will speak to right now. I fight very hard for historic preservation in this village. I lost the fight to keep an old fire truck years ago because I just thought it was neat. I lost the fight for something very important, and that's the whole 100-year-old two-room schoolhouse at the top of the hill. And whether you're a new resident or you've been here forever, we do have to keep some historic things. We now own at our marina the historic Bundah boat house. We have an opportunity to obtain the historic wooden craft that was the late Jack Bundah's boat, The Shadow, and he was an important member of our village committees, to preserve that as a showpiece, as part of our boat house and everything. So as a member of the community, I'm speaking on behalf of that, and I want them to speak further.
Thank you.
So my name is Russ Horker. I live at 10947 North Birchwood Drive in Township of Liberty Grove. Can I pass these around?
Sure.
So I represent a group of people, any of which are here, that would like to preserve The Shadow. The Shadow has been a Sister Bay icon for 88 years. It grew up in 1929, went with brand new at the Friedland estate on Beach Road, and went to Jack and Pat Bundah's house in 1972. So the boat's currently stored in one of Mitch Larson's buildings down in Eck Harbor. The disposition of the boat at this point is sort of unknown. There's a group of people that would like to come together, preserve the boat, keep it in the village of Sister Bay. So I know this is a budget item on the agenda. The best part about this budget request is we're not asking for any money. So what we are asking for is that the village help us sponsor this preservation fund by creating a line item in their budget where donations could go and get funneled into and be tax deductible by the donor. And that would be used, those funds would be used then to purchase The Shadow, preserve it, and then the hitch to this is to put it into the old Bundah boat house down near the marina. So it's a two-part request, basically, asking the village to give us the opportunity to bring in money to save the boat and then to earmark the use of the boat house to place the boat in and preserve it there. Our goal would also be to raise the necessary funds to rehab the boat house in whatever fashion is necessary to place the boat there as a static display, and even possibly maybe even get the boat house back to an operational point where the boat could be brought out for special events like Marina Fest on the Fourth of July and that sort of thing, or, you know, Fall Fest parade, that sort of thing. So there's a bunch of people here. Pat Margore here, Bill Hebel, Alan Kimble, and I'll let them come up and introduce themselves real quickly and tell them what they think about this. But it's a great thing. It is a village icon. It needs to stay in Sister Bay, and everybody that we talked to, this project has kind of been sent to see, but everyone we talked to loves this idea. We've got Mitch Larson on board. We've got Lars Johnson on board. I mentioned it to Chris Pack the other night. He thought it was a great idea, honestly, to be present. But it's one of these projects that took on a life of its own really, really quickly because everybody thinks it's a fantastic idea.
I just want to interject one thing. This group did come to the Parks Committee last week, and we didn't have a quorum, unfortunately. So we couldn't make a recommendation up to the board, so we asked if they would come directly to the budget meeting, understand they're also going to have to probably work with the marina committee who has the building. And so this was the first step to get this kicked off where we all knew what was being discussed.
My name is Alan Kimble. My wife and I are part-time residents of the village on Birchwood Drive. My sister Gwen Schultz is a full-time resident of the village at Woodcrest and Scandia. And my sister Betsy Rogers and her husband Frank own the family cottage on Beach Road that was built in 1926 by my grandparents. In 1929, my dad owned the Chris Craft Agency in Chicago. He sold The Shadow to Arthur Friedland. And the legend has a found, I can't, we don't know if it's true or not, but there's a claim that he drove it up from Chicago, and I can't attest to that as a reality. But, and over the years, Jack has been generous in taking our family for cruises out on the bay in The Shadow, most notably on my mother's 95th birthday 16 years ago. She got to ride in The Shadow for the first time. This is an important part of our family history here, and our family is prepared to make a significant contribution to the Adaman Fund to acquire this and keep it operating. Thank you.
My name is Mike Carr. I own Test Store Marine. I've been around here a little while. Sorry, I don't have better clothes on, but I'm making sure to know this. The channels and Jack Bundah have been, you know, an icon of Sister Bay for many, many years. I've done work on both boat houses, both Jack's private one and the boat house in the middle of town here. Some of those memories are kind of hazy in the middle of that when we got done, but regardless, I think, you know, I've done work on many facilities up here, and if we don't preserve our history and the testaments of the people who helped make our history, and Jack was instrumental in many parts of the village in terms of the marina and other aspects of it, preserving The Shadow, I think, between him and the Sunken and the Bundah family, I think, would be a tremendous step in the right direction. I will do whatever I can. You know, I remember talking to you guys and filling in the boat house. You know, I don't know the exact whether it should be taken out or filled in again or done. However, those can be discussed at a later meeting. I think it would be a great idea to dedicate that area for The Shadow and put some funds into doing it, presenting it to the village and our tourist industry as a way of preserving our past. Thank you.
My name is Bill Hebel. Not a resident of Sister Bay. I come from Jacksonport. I had a slip in the marina for 27 years, and of course, got to know Jack really well. well, and, uh, I was quite often entertained by early evening, you'd hear The Shadow start, and Jack would take his little tour up to Ephraim and back down the peninsula. But, uh, other things, uh, I'm sure you remember the, a few years ago when the Stanley Cup came to Door County, Jack was the one that, uh, picked it up and delivered it by boat to a gathering of people, uh, that, uh, were at his house. Uh, I think everything else has been pretty much said. I think it would be a great thing, uh, to have preserved in Sister Bay, and I think the boat house also is one of the few left, and it would be a great thing to have here, and, uh, would be a good attraction, and I think, uh, probably would bring more people to Sister Bay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other budget issues? Going once, going twice, last chance. All right, we'll close the public hearing on the budget. Now, we should entertain some discussion if you'd like, or a motion to refer this to the board for its final consideration on October twenty-fourth. Anybody have anything? Just, just a motion to refer it to the October twenty-fourth meeting.
I have one question. Um, I don't know where it is because I've kind of not, um, lost my way here, but, um, there was a line in there for the countrywalk sidewalks, but there was no dollar amount. Is that something that's still in the budget, or where is that?
Was that in the CIP that you were looking, Kathy?
I, I was listening to everybody, and I was, I kind of lost my page, but, um, I think it was, yes, it was in the CIP.
Everything was zeroed out on that.
Okay.
Um, it was Tasha's recommendation because we had basically used all of the money in all those CIP accounts, um, to pay for other things.
Okay.
And even though it showed a dollar amount for all those different items, we had borrowed everything.
Okay.
And so instead of confusing everybody, she just said, let's just make it all zero and start over again, and so.
So it's just going to go forward for two thousand and eighteen?
That was an item that never got funded, uh, that was done back in two thousand, part of the two thousand seventeen budgets, where we had said was we wanted to include it as a line item so that it would be brought up for conversation, uh, but there weren't actually any dollars allocated to it. So it'll now go into the, um, the category for that particular item in CIP, and then as items are prioritized, um, they'll move forward with completion.
Okay, and weren't we going to prioritize those CIPs again? I mean, I, it seemed like we talked about that last meeting, and they're, you said to watch for them, and we'd be looking at them, but I never saw them again, so, I mean, I, I just thought that we were going to kind of review those again as a board, but.
And we, we certainly will again on the twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth, okay.
The CIP as adjusted by the.
Okay.
Finance committee is available online.
Okay.
And you can pull it up and see just the CIP items.
Okay. Yeah, like, I mean, I did, I did see it, but, you know, I was paying attention, and so now I've lost it on my screen. I'm not going to go back, but, I mean, I remembered that was something, that was important, and even though I'm not living there in the future, it's still important because I think, um, that road really needs to have a sidewalk, especially with the more apartments coming in there, so. Okay, so we'll talk about it next week.
Page eighty-four has got the.
Thank you.
That have received some funding proposed in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Okay, yep, there it is.
Anything else?
Can I make a motion that, um, we include a line item in our budget, um, for donations for The Shadow?
Sure.
So we could just bring them in under donations, so we have a separate line item for that. So.
Right.
I guess that's a thought that I have, I don't know where your head is on it.
We could bring them in as a separate line item, or a separate item, or just under donations.
Yeah.
We would track them in, um, a special account on liability side.
I would feel much more comfortable, and maybe the people involved in this project would too, if there was a specific line item.
I agree.
Would you like that in the general fund or in the marina fund? Because the boat house is a marina asset.
Wherever you may think appropriate.
I guess that's, that's why I'm asking. I think it would go in the marina fund, um, the boat house is a marina asset, and, um, if you're going to talk about doing, excuse me, any kind of rehab on the boat house, it makes more sense there.
Could you do that, Pat?
Sure, conceptually, I think everybody should understand that things can change. It's, and, and I, I think it's a wonderful boat. It could be a great project. I find it interesting that, um, Mitch is on board with this because he wrote a letter to the committee asking us to bulldoze the boat house last year. I'm, Zeke brought to our meeting, which somewhat surprised us given his history, and so for the, you know, the endowment folks.
Things change, Pat.
But people should be, be aware of that, you know? The committee at that time decided, you know, there's revenue coming out of it, we don't want to do it, but that boat house is a hot potato. Um, and so I, I wouldn't want anybody to get any promises out of this. I think this is a great idea. It, it may wind up just as you intend, but I wouldn't want people to feel like this for sure will wind up as you intend. As things get fleshed out and, and develop, you know, we can certainly work toward that, but I just want everybody to understand there's history and.
And at parks, we pretty much said, said the same thing.
Okay.
There was some conversation at, at parks also. Russ and I actually went and looked at the bottom of the boat house today. At parks, we discussed that maybe the boat house is the place, maybe the boat house isn't the place, maybe it belongs to the historical society, um, maybe it belongs in a warehouse and sort of brought out for special displays. Um, that, that group will certainly play a role in the fundraising, and then we'll work to steer it wherever it seems most appropriate.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, because we, we've also looked at the, or, well, we looked at the underside of the boat house for other public uses, and anytime anybody goes in there goes, eh, this is really going to be much more of a nightmare, if even conceivable to undertake. So, again, I'm not that expert, I'm just relying on ones that have gone in there and said, this would be very challenging, very costly, not to say it couldn't be done, but just so that people understand professionals have been in there for uses of other things and said, it'd be much better, you could go construct something for much less, it would turn out better, so.
So if we can solve that problem for you.
That's fine, that's, I'm just, yeah.
I'm just making a motion that.
That's fine, that's fine, I, I know.
Have a line item for donations.
I just want people to be, to understand this, we'll work towards it, it may or may not come to fruition exactly as intended. I wouldn't want the newspaper to write, for instance, that the bottom of the boat house will be the next home of this. Maybe it will, maybe it won't, we're not there yet.
I'll second Denise's motion. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Um, any other discussion on the board about the budget? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to refer it to the board for next week. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Could we back up one second, possibly?
Okay.
I didn't know if this is not my place to say something.
Well, it, it just sort of ran along there, um, but, so, an item that came up from the marina committee, um, that we should maybe, some would consider a motion to amend and add in, um, related to Marina Fest. So I'm going to give just some brief background and pack, you kind of jump in, or Scott, you jump in if it sounds appropriate. So, Scott, chairman of the Marina Fest committee, um, was part of some conversations at a Marina Fest committee meeting whereby the, um, festival has, um, had some much improved financials each year for two years. It's been cash flow positive, nine to ten thousand dollars, and that really prompted some conversation, based on some historical conversation we've had, uh, that maybe the nonprofits would want to take that over, maybe they would be able to utilize that festival as some kind of an endowment fund, maybe they want to steer it in different directions. There's been, um, pretty consistent conversation from our nonprofits that Marina Fest should be a single-day event. It's anecdotally supported by commentary by some of our business owners that Mr. Burdo included, um, that when the festival's a single-day event, sales of, um, various products and food and beverage included are enhanced on days number two and, and three, when customers aren't necessarily outgoing to the festival. Um, so the Marina Fest committee made a recommendation of a number of items onto the marina committee, which was the appropriate path for that. Marina committee considered a number of those, which would include, um, number one, that a special revenue fund be created for Marina Fest, number two, that the committee assignments be amended, as would be discussed at this board, uh, to include some members of the nonprofits, a marina committee representative, uh, some members of the general public to sort of steer that event, um, that a conversation be had with the nonprofits, that after a couple of years have gone by, that the marina and village would no longer necessarily, I'm going to use the term support, but I don't mean that in a hard sense, would support that event to the degree which it currently, um, supports it. The marina committee said they would, um, recommend underwriting the working capital needs of the event going into this next year to the tune of twenty thousand dollars, and would also support that event with a two thousand dollar contribution toward the event that would just be a direct transfer over. Did I miss anything?
No, other than I don't know that, that working capital, the idea of next year, it could.
Oh, could keep going.
Stay there longer, there isn't a, you know, it ends or anything like that.
So short-term loan to the fund. Um, so ultimately, we would need a motion to direct Tasha to amend the budget in that fashion, to bring it back, um, to the twenty-fourth meeting, uh, as a special revenue fund for Marina Fest, and then we would have some further conversation at some level, we would discuss, um, related to, um, one, amending the bylaws to reflect a different committee membership, and also to develop some kind of an agreement that all the parties can sort of look at many years from now and go, yep, that's exactly what we agreed to, and let's all move forward together.
So have, through the meeting you had, have the non-profits or the organizations that would operate this agreed to this already, or no?
I would, I would ask Chief Chris Heck to speak up, if you permit that, because Chris, I think, really has his finger on the pulse of the nonprofits and how they think and feel about things.
So to answer your question, yes, the non-profits generally support the idea of Marina Fest going to a single bank. They support the idea of a revenue, special revenue fund, they agree that they should potentially give additional funds. Typically, we're all giving a ten percent now to increase our, um, give back to the fund to fifteen percent in an effort to try to make it, um, long-term financially viable to stand on its own.
One of the things that was discussed around that is that we've, we've now seen the historical society pull out altogether, um, as a participant in the event. The childcare center came up and tried to participate, and now has pulled out as a participant in that event. Ultimately, I, I think all of our organizations, um, civic, social, and otherwise in Sister Bay, continue to get greater, and each year that goes by, those greater bodies are having a hard time schlepping around beer kegs and flipping burgers and everything else that goes into that. So if, if we're successful in managing this going forward, um, then effectively what may happen is that entity, Zeke's vision for that would be that it would be some kind of a five oh one C three or something to that effect, or run underneath one of the existing nonprofit umbrellas, and that the revenue that would then come off of the for-profit vendors would ultimately act as an endowment to those organizations. So maybe the volunteer demands are lessened, you know, maybe they just are running, uh, sort of the beer wagon at some point in the future, not necessarily doing the food service. Have no idea what that'll look like, but if you empower them to make those decisions, I think they'll do their best to try to make good decisions.
All right, that being said.
We're looking for a motion to do that, I'd be happy to make that motion.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Okay, so do you want that to say that a separate line item be included in the marina fund portion?
No.
No, in the general fund portion?
Special revenue fund be established.
Okay.
So you're looking at essentially a twenty thousand dollar short-term loan from marina to this other fund. Do you want that formalized, or kind of, any kind of informal?
Meaning, do you want to show a lot of, basically a cash transfer between the funds, or do you just want to still?
Schedule, do you want, I mean, what are we looking at?
I don't know if that's been determined yet.
Too early to tell.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, whatever's easiest and is clear.
Yeah.
For you, from an accounting standpoint, Marina wants to help, wants to see Marina Fest continue, and in any way that we can do that, we would like to do it.
Okay.
However, it works financially for the village and for you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so that a special revenue fund shall be established for Marina Fest in the two thousand and eighteen budget, do you want an amendment there?
The potential change in CIP availability, do we need to say?
No, can you read that back for me?
That a special revenue fund shall be established for Marina Fest in the two thousand and eighteen budget.
Yes, with a, with a twenty thousand dollar working capital contribution to be returned to marina at a later date, and an annual two thousand dollar contribution.
Hold on one second.
Sorry.
Later dates.
I thought you were super speedy.
And what?
And a two thousand dollar annual contribution from the marina to the Marina Fest special revenue fund. Right?
Can I read that back then?
Please.
Okay, that is Marina Fest special revenue fund shall be established in the two thousand and eighteen budget with a two thousand, twenty thousand dollar working capital contribution to be returned to the marina at a later date, and a two thousand annual contribution to be made by the marina to the Marina Fest special revenue fund. Is that right? You think so?
All right, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Are you sure?
I did. No, I did, yes.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Okay, then that made his motion, and Scott seconded it, that the budget was reviewed at this meeting, shall be referred to a special village bill meeting on October twenty-fourth at six P M.
Correct.
For subsequent discussion and adoption.
As amended. As amended.
So did you vote on that?
Yes, we voted.
Okay.
Do you want to make a note of that in the.
Yeah, as it came from the committee, it's just not reflected here.
Okay.
Item number five, discussion on village bylaws confirmation of present owners of properties that are in none tonight, and no discussion that I'm aware of. Reported county activities and county supervisor Dave Neal, the county was doing exactly what we are doing at the present time, going through inordinate amount of numbers and budget hearings and budget items. Today, the administrative committee met with the finance committee and approved the additional positions that were going to be added within the upcoming budget and changes made during two positions, and that was the purpose of the meetings today. The budget hearing for the county will be in November, I believe it's November fourteenth, will be the county budget. Item number seven, review of financial statements and consideration of motion to approve the monthly bills.
Starts on page one thirty in your, in your zone. You have both the monthly bills, and then you have the September thirtieth, um, financial statements for the major funds, general fund, utilities, marina. Um, we made some debt service payments in, um, end of September and into October. You'll continue to see those in the next month, so.
So I'll make a motion, we approve the village bills in the amount of six hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Second.
Any items? I saw nothing that jumped out.
I saw nothing that jumped out on my side.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you want to say anything about the, all the funds after that?
Nothing that we haven't probably already covered in the budget, in all of our budget meetings. I feel like everyone's pretty familiar with where we stand at this point, but for the public's perspective, revenues in the general fund are above budget generally, so been so far a very good year for revenues. There will, you will be seeing some budget amendments coming forth in the next month or two to clean up some items in the administrative section and possibly in the parks section. Administratively, we made some decisions this year for succession planning reasons that have affected the budget, and there have been some, some decisions made in Parks that were costly, or some, not decisions, but some needs in Parks that were a little bit costly. The Marina Fund, really great year for the Marina so far, although it's almost done, right? So a great year for the Marina. Everything is looking good there. Utilities are also looking solid, so nothing, nothing too exciting unless you have any questions. And if you ever see anything in these financials that you have a question about and would like more detail, please let me know, and I'll get you that detail.
Thank you.
Report by village administrator on village activities and projects.
I guess I'll just ask, anybody have any questions about anything going on? Otherwise, things are fairly straightforward on the up and up, moving along inside the village with various projects that have been ongoing. Handrails are up over on the Braum property. Took us a little while to get those, but they're there. I think people are grateful that they're there. I'm going to mention a couple of things that aren't necessarily part of the report, and that is related to Fall Fest.
I want to address that separately.
Okay. So Fall Fest went well overall. Traffic detouring was problematic, and we have had a conversation with State Highway Patrol, so communication in this. State Highway Patrol looked at things last year and said, we want things to be different. We want to shut down 57 and 42 going into town and basically route everything around Country Lane to Flint Ridge, up to Woodcrest, and into our exterior parking lots. They communicated that to DOT's permitting section, and so when we had conversations with DOT's permitting section and made requests to change that, DOT's permitting section said, nope, State Highway Patrol has said, you need to do these other things. Well, turns out, when you're standing there with the flashy lights on with the officer who makes the recommendations and cars are flying past you, all of a sudden, you can change some things, right? Because now we're in the thick of it and going, we don't want to do this again next year. So Jenny Austin, or Trooper Jenny Austin, and I had a conversation, and she said, yeah, let's, um, let's go to one detour, the inner detour, which is right over here on Maple. So you, you shut down Bay Shore Drive at Maple, push people out to Woodcrest, turn that down Woodcrest to Scandia and Scandia over. That'll allow people on 42 and 57 to come through our entire Uptown. I got a number of complaints from Uptown business owners who said, look, we just didn't get the traffic flow, people weren't here. And if we change the traffic pattern to that, I think it will alleviate some of those particular concerns.
There was also discussion about changing the parade staging area?
Oh, yes, sir.
So that that detour wouldn't be a necessity?
So that, that was another conversation item. Trooper Austin suggested that we stage on Mill, I'm sorry, on Maple West and loop it from Maple West down to Mill by the car show. And effectively, the parade would just kind of start, take a, it would then be a left by Husby's instead of a right by Husby's coming from the other direction. And in that manner, you would not have any parade staging on Maple slash ZZ. It would all just kind of be right there, ready to go. Another recommendation that came out of that, and I wholeheartedly concur with her, and that comes from directing traffic, if the Lions Club car show participants and the parade participants cannot be in place before 9:00 AM, they should not be allowed to participate. And that's simply because when we allow one vehicle to come past, it messes up the whole traffic flow of people coming through, and then when the one vehicle goes through, everybody else starts to jump in right behind them, and Trooper Austin and I almost got ran over a couple of times. To allow the, you know, the guy with the antique car to come through, it just wasn't a safe situation. So somehow, we're going to need to communicate that out, provided that you guys are okay with that, or folks don't want to get run over, so I hope you're okay with it, to the participants of those two events.
Okay. Any report from utility?
Are you going to talk about your thing later?
Yes. I was going to talk about refer to a committee.
Oh, okay.
But I can do it anytime.
If I can interject, looking at Mike's report, wanted to make note of one thing. We did receive a grant for some safety equipment from the League Mutual Insurance. So that was, it was a small grant of $750,000, but it was replacing some equipment that had broken, so.
Wait a minute. Did you say $750,000?
$715,000, sorry.
The camera doesn't detect.
Talking big numbers.
We can only wish.
I was going to say, we call that small.
We're going to go into executive session last, and we'll take a break in between. While everybody's still here and publicly seated, I want, one of the items, discussion regarding matters of replacement of future gender referred to committee official or employee. I don't know if any of you have received any calls or emails concerning Fall Fest and things that occurred during Fall Fest and results of Fall Fest. Of course, everybody knows we had a tragic, tragic occurrence in the Marina. But I received a lot of calls about the fact that this year, there seemed to be a number of more accidents and incidents. There seemed to be a lot more drinking, there seemed to be a lot more routiness than had been in some previous years. And I don't know if you've received calls or not, but I've received a lot in the last two days. So I was going to suggest that maybe what we should do, we've done this in the past, but maybe formalize it a little bit more, is maybe sit down and have a listening session with a group, with SBA, with ourselves, with the stakeholders, with the businesses, and with the general public, and discuss where we're going with Fall Fest. In the last several years, we've done a lot of good things. We've tried to move more towards more family-oriented items. SBA has worked very hard to do that and to make new things available to bring in families and not concentrate on the drinking so much. And this year, there were a lot of people in town, and things started early and went late, and I just suggest that we put that as an item to do something like that, get that input.
Sounds good.
And sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
While it's still fresh.
Sir.
Would you like to fire EMS law?
Sure, absolutely. That's all part of the stakeholders.
You're right.
Committee reports. Admin has not met. Admin and county has not met. Communications and technology, I don't think there's minutes in here, but we did meet with the county to review our CIP and IT needs for next year.
Yes, sir.
Finance is aware of this, we had that discussion. Coastal byways?
Meet tomorrow at 8:30.
Continues to meet. Have a meeting.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, related to some fun things happening up here in Northern County.
So DCECD, a couple of other folks are going to come, have a meeting up here to talk about some econ development items.
That's on Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Meeting here in this building?
It is a closed meeting. It's not necessarily open to all stakeholders, it's select stakeholders and staff.
If we can discuss it in the close.
Okay.
Economic Development has not met. Finance has met. The results are tonight's meeting.
I mean.
Fire.
You've got some minutes from Tuesday, September 12th in there. That was our beginning of talking on the, the budget for next year. And then you also have a meeting, our minutes from Wednesday, October 3rd, in which we again talked about the budget, heavy rescue, and we discussed sending a letter of support out to the, to, to municipalities about talking.
Are you, is everybody aware of what we did?
I think we need to talk about that closed session.
Okay.
Okay.
Historical Society.
No minutes in here. Had a meeting on the, on the 5th, basically got the barn issue Chairman Fred Thompson put out a letter and little teeth in it, and so things were settled, and we're moving ahead with that barn.
So they're, they're building a new barn?
They're going to build a new barn.
Call the lighting has not met. Library?
Library met last week, the 10th. They are getting some 18-inch metal letters to put on the west side, says library, and working on converting the lighting into LEDs.
You took action on that tonight?
Yep. Parking?
Meeting next Tuesday, hopefully, if there's a quorum.
Parks? There was a set of minutes in there? Well, that was working on the, there's prior minutes. We didn't, we did not end up with a quorum at the last meeting, so we just.
The shadow was the big thing.
Shadow was the big thing. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, because it is in the minutes, so I can bring it up, was the crossing.
Oh, yeah.
Sign up at the crosswalk by.
Country Walk.
Country Walk. Since we did have a quorum, we couldn't make a motion to advance any action, so I suggested that this board might be able to do that. We've had a request to put some type of lighted signage up there, so it becomes more effective, so people can see it. Zeke came up with the idea, Zeke and, and.
Jim.
Jim. There's some lights that can be hung over the existing signs that we could try as a first, first line of defense and see if that is any more effective.
That may do it, but the, the standard signage that sort of meets the uniform traffic control manuals, they're 1,700 bucks a pop, we need two of them. You have $3,400 in signs wrapped up there. So we're going to, we're going to try route number one first and see if that kind of does the gig.
So do we need a motion for that?
We'll just keep the dollar amount together on what that will end up being.
Okay. Land Commission?
Minutes are in your packet. Any questions?
We saw those results too tonight.
Pardon?
We saw those results too tonight.
Yes.
SBA?
Your quarterly financials were handed out beginning this meeting, you need to approve release of funds.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tourism Zone?
Continues to meet. Sister Bay is absolutely dominating the increase in room tax collection. We are up a little over 14%. We have consistently, in the time that I've been here, been the fourth largest collector of room tax this year. We have now passed the Village of Ephraim to become the third largest collector of room tax. I'm really anxious to see if by the end of the season, we are successful in sort of beating out Gibraltar, if you will, to become the second largest collector of room tax. Looking at it projecting ahead, it sort of shakes down based on what's going on with fall weather. Certainly with the new, some of that's related to capacity, just do you have the capacity to put the people with the new condo or condo hotel project? If that has a high rental rate, I would anticipate that we will likely become the second largest remitter of room tax.
Has met. On the utility side, we had Jonathan Orick talk to us about the land lease, which was approved on Humburg Road. He will continue his cattle out there and won't be, won't be farmed. On the water and sewer side, we have Robert E. Lee there talking about the Liberty Grove water pressure and giving us some ideas about how to solve those problems.
Questions on utilities? All right, so what we'll do is we'll convene into executive session, we'll take a recess before we do that, 10 minutes before we do that. So we'll convene first. I make a motion to convene executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851E, delivery, the negotiation, purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Motion by Lino?
Second.
Roll call. Lino, yes?
Burdo, yes.
Duffy, yes?
Henquist, yes.
Baker, yes?
We'll now take a 10-minute recess. Thank you, everyone, for coming.